Stand by, stand by. Cameras. Welcome to Market City Commission Agenda for Monday, March 11th, 2013. At this time, will you please join my fellow commissioners and I in a pledge allegiance to the flag? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Here.
Commissioner Coyne?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Schneider?
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Neme?
Here.
Mayor DePietro?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Commissioner Schneider, Commissioner Stonehouse?
A motion to excuse Commissioner Schneider as he is out of town.
Is there a second? Commissioner Coyne? There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse and a second by Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Stonehouse, would you give the reason why Commissioner Schneider is not here?
My understanding is he's out of town on business.
Yes, you're absolutely correct. Thank you very much for that. With that, I'll ask, all in favor, say yes.
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 Pose. Motion pass at six to zero. Thank you. Note of agenda changes. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
I'd like to move item M under consent agenda off for discussion purposes.
You said N?
M.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Kim Benzey.
Your Honor, it's not a, it's not a motion. I think she can just have it re-
Oh, I know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she can just have it removed.
Yes. But anyways, yeah, okay. So we'll move that up to where on agenda?
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Which one?
Fourteen.
Yeah, we can do it fourteen. How about N? Did you have?
No.
Okay, we're good there, right? Okay, with the changes to the agenda, is there a motion to accept it? Commissioner Neme?
Thank your honor. I'll move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Is there a second? Commissioner Kim Benzey? There's a motion by Commissioner Neme, second by Commissioner Kim Benzey. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose. Motion pass at six to zero. Thank you. At this time, for announcements, I got a couple here. Housing Commission, one vacancy. And local officers compensation commission, three openings. Planning Commission, one vacancy as of three, nineteen thirteen. Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, one alternate opening. Sister City Advisory Committee, two openings. Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Rep. That's one vacancy. Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee, one vacancy. Thank you. With that, I'd like to invite the Alpine Division One Boy Ski Team Champions up to the lectern over here. This is Market Senior High School Alpine Ski Team. And for a little bit of history on this, I'll have the coach come over and do a little presentation of how you got your team, I'm sorry, got all of your teams, area players, your skiers together, and did such an awesome job down in Boeing City. And competition was very tough, so I know that this wasn't a gimme, so the coach has quite a bit to say about all of you skiers. And this year, you can hold up, and then I got a packet for the rest of your, rest of your skier, so if you'd step, step up here and speak to the city commission and the audience, okay, the floor is yours.
Well, I'd like to thank the commission and the whole community for the incredible outpouring that we've seen in the last couple of weeks. It's, it's been quite an honor to represent Marquette and really humbling all the community's, you know, support we've gotten. So we have Dylan, Joe, Avery, Nick, Kyle, Luke, Travis, and Matt. And how they got together, well, they've been skiing together their whole lives. We have a really tight group of juniors. It's, the juniors are Dylan, Avery, Luke, and Matt are the juniors, and Kyle's our only senior graduating. We have Travis and Joe are freshmen, and Nick's a sophomore right behind these guys, but he skis in the same age class. So they've been skiing together their whole lives. And this is just reaching a culmination of that. Most of the guys have one more year to go, and then it'll be up to Nick and Joe and Travis to keep the tradition going.
Well, thank you very much, Coach. And also, did you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm Marty Paulson.
So, anyways, thank you. But in this packet, each one of you's, well, could you hold that up a little bit so the audience can see? And then, when you get ready to leave, I know you're ready to pull out and do other things at this time, but one of the things I hope that you'll do is wait out in the hallway and let some of the people that got cameras want to take pictures of you, is that correct? Does there anybody want to take pictures of them? Yeah, there's some that want to take pictures, so don't be running out of the city commission chambers like at high school. Just, you know, wait out in the hallway and let them take some pictures, because this is awesome. I mean, my fellow commissioners and I were very, very proud of not just the way you people had won the state championship, but also how many hundreds and hundreds of hours that's dedicated between you students and the coaches and the parents and a lot of people involved. So when you're, you know, like, probably eight, nine, ten years from now, and you guys get together somewhere on Third and Prospect or wherever, you'll be sitting there, you'll be sitting saying, boy, that was fun back in those days, you know? So, I know, I've, I see this all the time from past high school students that won championships. So, yes, we're very proud of you, and could we give them a round of applause, please? Thank you. Thank you again. Very good. Nice job, you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks.
And then, yeah, just wait outside. I think somebody want to take some pictures of you. Anyways, at this time, I'd like to have the Market Senior High School Nordic Ski Boys Team up here and with the coach, the coach and assistant coaches. Could you just please come up here? Is that the coach? Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were one of the sophomores at high school. Sorry about that. Come here for a minute. Anyways, this is the head coach for the Market Senior High School Boys Nordic Ski Team Champion of Division One. So anyways, would you identify yourself and give a little history of how you pulled this off?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Joe Gracie, head coach. I know it doesn't look like it. Fourth-year head coach, actually. This is our, actually, our fourth year as a high school ski team as well affiliated with Market Senior High School before we were Superior Land Ski Club. Still affiliations with that, too. So, I'm going to choke on this, I know. We have Matt, Paul, Mike, Ben.
Here.
Oh, I got it. Andy, and?
Nick.
Nick. Nick's, it's his first year on the ski team. But a lot of these guys have been skiing their whole lives. Some of them have actually just started this year, so we have a range of people that, on our team right now. And then, it looks like, it looks like our season's going to last another month, but we'll see.
Excellent. Thank you very much. But one of the things that my fellow commissioners and I and the people in the audience are so impressed, how, not so much about the coaches, but how the students train the coaches so that you's are that good. So excellent job, you students. And with that, could you hold that up for a minute over there so they can take a couple of pictures of you people? And then with that, if you want to wait out in the hallway, I'm sure somebody wants to take some pictures of you. And could we give them a round of applause, please? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You bet. Thank you. I'll be right back. At this time, for a presentation, we're going to have Downtown Development Authority with our executive director, Mona Lang.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am pleased to be able to be here to present the 2011-2012 Report for the Downtown Development Authority. And I did promise several commissioners that I would talk fast and be brief. So, if we can get that, Chris, you got it? Am I good? Okay. Can't do it without my glasses. Okay. I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview about the DDA for the audience and also for any new commissioners. And I'm not going to go through all of this because you can read it, and you've also received a copy of my presentation in your packets. But the DDA was established by the city commission, and it is an authority of the city, so it is a public authority. There is a misconception sometimes that it is a business association. We do not collect dues. We are authorized by the city. We act according to the Michigan Public Act, and the purpose is to, to halt property value deterioration in downtown districts, increase property values, and promote economic growth. We have nine members, and I have four with me tonight that I would like to introduce. Bill Hetrick, who is our past chairperson. Christine Pasola, who is our current chairperson. Karen Henricks, who is our resident and our treasurer, and Wes Parnsteiner. The fundamental goals of the DDA are to, number one, to increase property values, create and maintain a favorable business investment environment, ensure sustainability of our district, and then to support downtown property owner businesses, residents, and professionals. This is just a quick little overview of how we're funded. I know that you've seen our budget and you've seen our year-end financial reports. The city commission does approve our budget. We go through a presentation process through the budget workshops and, but we, our major, our major fund sources are parking rentals, parking meter revenues, which prior to 2012, we would split those fifty percent with the city. We now receive a hundred percent of all the parking meter revenues, but have also assumed the maintenance and administration of those parking meters also. The tax increment financing, two mil, and then some additional grant funds that we are fortunate enough to, to apply for and receive. Looking at our breakdown of expenditures, you can see our maintenance and parking operations is the major component of our budget. Operations and administration, promotion, capital outlay, some debt service. We have right now a $1.5 million bond outstanding, and we just paid off a $750,000 bond, which was a seven-year bond. So that's kind of just a little breakdown of our operations. And then I want to talk just a little bit about the year-end review. Our district was expanded, as you know, to include Third Street, and that was in September of 2011. We do the maintenance and aesthetic improvements for the downtown district, the sidewalks, the walkways, flowers, flags, holiday decorations, street furnishings, amenities. So anything of that nature that is a little bit extra falls under the purview of the DDA. We also just completed a $1.2 million restoration project of the Bluff Street parking structure. We continue to manage parking under contract with the city, and that is the daily operations. And then, we also just contracted a parking study and management plan, which was presented to the city commission in January. And, and then something that is really has taken, I think, some emphasis of the DDA, and that is what I call our expanded organizational focus. We are beyond bricks and mortar now. When I first started my job fifteen years ago, the DDA was focused on just what we call bricks and mortar. We have expanded that for promotional activities and events, marketing, the farmer's market, training and development of our businesses, and then a lot of collaborations with other organizations. And the DDA board has really looked to expanding our focus to really support the businesses. They find it to be one of their charges to ensure that the businesses that are in our district are sustainable, and that we know that tourism is, is one of our major industries, and to ensure that when tourists and visitors come to Marquette, that they go away with a positive Marquette experience. This is just a little overview of the district properties. With Third Street, we now have 320 parcels in the district for a totalable taxable value in 2012 of $48,992.766. This is a little pie chart, just gives you a little breakdown of the different businesses we have by type. We have 408 businesses within the district, broken down, retail, professional, personal services, restaurants, and nonprofits. So it's really a full-service district. And it does employ about 2,500 people in the downtown district, which is actually second, the second-largest employer in the city next to MGH. Talking a little bit about maintenance and aesthetics, we maintain, let even add that up, 6.6 miles of sidewalks, 4.3 in the original district, and then another 2.3. And one of our challenges is always the snow maintenance, and something that we need to work toward. If we're going to be a walkable city, we need to ensure that we're walkable, and so that, that's always a challenge. We also do all the, we spend about $10,000, we spend $10,000 for the lighting downtown, $4,000 of that in Matt's and Lower Harbor Park, the lighting in the trees for the holidays. And we purchased some flags for Third Street, holiday decorations for Third Street, wreaths for the trees, flowers. NMU, we have worked with them. They have funded new NMU flags for, for downtown and for Third Street to celebrate the university and also the events. We've had custom bike racks made, and again, benches, and we were fortunate that the, the technology, College of Technology and Applied Sciences at Northern, their programs have really helped us with benches. They, they have done our benches for us, free of charge. We've paid for the materials. So as you can see, these collaborations, the partnerships are very important. This is just a little overview of the ramp restoration project. As you can see, the deterioration on the concrete, for years, we piecemealed that, spending thousands of dollars and to no benefit really until we did a complete restoration project. And we are estimating another 20 years of useful life for that structure. And that did include all new joints, all new concrete, deck service, car charging stations, and then the tower repairs. If you look at that, you can see that the stairways were almost completely rusted, that the walls, you can see the water damage to the walls, and all of that has been repaired and taken care of. Parking management, this is just a little bit of an overview. We are, you know, as businesses, we've lost a couple of large professional businesses. The Diocese moved out of downtown. Upfront uncompany moved, and that does have an impact on our parking revenue and our parking permits. A full-time parking permit right now is $20 a month, part-time, $10 a month. And then, this is just an overview of the operations of the, of the parking system. I love the picture because it's a meter lane on the, on the ground, and somebody taped a couple quarters to it. So, but we have 142 meters right now downtown, and, you know, we continue to struggle with having the parking system actually pay for itself, and that is something that we will look at in the parking management plan as we move forward. We, I know we presented to the, the commission and to the DDA board the management plan, but this is some of the highlights of that, and that is to manage demand better, to make those spaces that are the highest use and most desirable, to control that with pricing, and then to make those less-used parking areas more desirable to use. So using, looking at some of the new technologies, better accommodation of transit, bike and walking access, and some of that also will be addressed as we go forward with the Third Street Sustainability Plan and the Transportation Plan. Work with property owners to facilitate joint use of some of the private lots, reassess clear vision districts, distances on Third Street, and then to look at creating public parking opportunities on Third. The farmer's market, we are committed to the farmer's market. It's very important to our community. It has really become a, not only a social engine, but it has also become an economic engine, helping with a lot of entrepreneurs. We see a lot of startup businesses coming through the market, and as you can see, the flow-through funds in 2012 are up 64 percent. So we have seen a gradual increase in the income that our farmers are flowing through that, through that market, and also the increase in the average weekly customer count. We will be hiring a full-time, well, full-time 25-hour-per-week Market Master Manager in the next several weeks. Unfortunately, our ex-market manager has a full-time job, and this is almost a full-time job, so we are looking to replace that. We did receive a $46,000 farmer's market promotion grant. That is a two-year program. We've used it for tents. We bought a kiosk, we had a kiosk made for the market manager to give that manager more focus, and then some on advertising. We also received an $8,700 Fair Food Network. It's called a Double Up Food Bucks Grant, and it's our understanding that we will receive that grant again this year. We've started and really tried to encourage our businesses to participate in training and support activities. We look to do more of that in the future. And also promotion and events, that's probably right now what is in everybody's mind. We just finished a very successful winter weekend, but our Blueberry Festival has grown to attract, we estimate about 3,000 attendees. The New Year's Ball Drop, again, these are annual events, welcome trick-or-treaters. The, the businesses have reported that the numbers of trick-or-treaters have increased to around 1,200 kids, so it's a lot of candy to give out, and that is all sponsored by our businesses in the downtown and on Third Street. The Hockey on Third Parade has, has grown. We want to make that like the premier hockey event in the country. Ladies Night, we had 1,600 women participate this year in Ladies Night. Music on Third, we're trying to grow that event. And then the Holiday Parade is in its second year, and we had 49 participants in the actual parade itself, and that's becoming, I think, a very popular and wonderful event for our city. We hadn't had a holiday parade prior to 2011. And then we help support the Tall Ships, the Midnight Run, we donate to the U.P. Sled Dog Association. We did the wood cutouts for the Ford Convention when it was here, and that was popular, community art project. And then we also sponsored a vintage fashion show during that week, and we were fortunate to raise just a little bit over $500 for the Father Marquette Restoration Project. We also support the East Side Originals and the Halloween Spectacle. We provided about $1,000 to help that event. And then the Kiwanis Kitty Mutt Race, we, our staff sets up and does the staff, or the track, and supports that event. And then, of course, the last newest event is our Rail Jam. We thought from rails to rails was a good, good image of how far we've come in the last several years. Like I said, when I started my job 15 years ago, events was, were not in our purview. So looking ahead, we have several projects that are bricks and mortar. So, looking ahead, we have several projects that are bricks and mortar, East Washington Street, Main Street Tire Repairs, that's about a sixty-thousand-dollar repair project. We're going to do some enhancements to the Marquette Commons to make it a little more user-friendly. We've got to look forward to the implementation of this parking plan. And snow management, we're going to work with the city on the Third Street Sustainability Plan and Transportation Plan. Branding, that's a challenge, since we have Third Street, Downtown Barack Avenue, Founder's Landing, we need to find a way to pull all that together, and we'll be focusing on that and engaging our businesses in that. Support and facilitate, we have several development projects that we think are in the pipeline, that, that we will help support through either grant, help maybe grant writing and some other, other ways, potential parking provision, promotion, marketing of the district and the city, continued collaboration. We've had a great partnership with the Marquette Country, Marquette County Convention and Visitors' Bureau. We've worked well with them on, on support of a lot of events. Policies and regulations, there's some, some changes that we need to look at that affect the district, signage, the pop-up businesses, the food, food trucks. So there's several, several issues that will be, come into the Planning Commission and through the Planning Commission to the City Commission to look at some of those policies. And then, looking at our budget resources, we will be looking at a reduction in personal property tax. We expect that to be about ten percent of our budget, so we'll need to look at other ways to raise funds and to, obviously, to, you know, cut back on our expenses. So, that's my quick presentation, probably not as quick as you would have liked, but, so if you have any questions, I'm here, and my board members are here, and...
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Kebansy?
I just have a, one quick comment, and that is just to really showcase what an outstanding job you've done as a director, because I hear it all the time, people that are absolutely thrilled with what you're doing downtown. It is more alive than I can remember, and all the events and the grants you go after and capture, I mean, you really, you do a great job. You've got a great board with many of them here, and I just want to say thank you for continually to work as hard as you do.
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would certainly echo that comment. I mean, it's downtown is an absolute pleasure to be part of, to be down there, and the folks that visit from outside the area just can't believe the vibrancy and, and the, the beat, if you will, of downtown. So thank to, thanks to you and thanks to the, the great board you have putting it together.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none at this time, I'll just say to, could you have your present boards that are here come up there with you?
Absolutely, I'd love to.
And introduce them as they come up on the screen?
And I'd just like to also, just as another comment, is that I also have a great staff. We have one full-time maintenance coordinator, five part-time, and we have a, an office staff. We just hired a marketing and promotions coordinator, so we feel like we're staffed at a level now that we can really do even more, so. But my board, I'm happy to recognize...
Lana, could you have the men step over towards the picture next to the girls?
Why don't I let them introduce themselves so they can speak into the microphone?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Christine Pasola, and I ditto your comments. I've been involved with the DDA for, well, this is my second stint of two terms, or whatever it is, but the, the progress I've seen is just incredible. We're thrilled to have worked out the Third Street piece, and we're really looking forward to doing some great stuff.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Hendricks, and I'm a resident of downtown, and I would, I would also ditto that, those comments. It's, it's wonderful living in downtown and being a part of such a vibrant community.
Thank you.
Name's Weston Perstener, and I'd like to thank Lana and her staff and the great work they do to make the town everything it is. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bill Hedrick, in addition to the eloquent words the City Commission has said, I would like to thank the city staff for being there. They, they are very supportive, and we certainly appreciate it as a DDA board.
And before you leave, I wanted to thank you, realizing that you did create a monster with that Rail Jam, because everybody's all pumped up for 2014, and they want to start up on Red Street and come down front and shoot down the hill, and, yeah, it's, I can't wait. I think I'll be joining that group, doing that. And again, I want to thank all of yous for being up here and for all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, we'll move to number four presentation, Special Counsel to the City by Rich Baron Foley Baron Metzger. And Rich, you can pronounce that J-U-I-P, Cliff's Dows Project Update.
I will be happy to as soon as I can figure out how to make this work. Dennis, please. There we go, all right. You can stay, that's all right. Thank you for having me. My name is Richard Baron, an attorney with Foley Baron Metzger, and Yip would be the last name there. And I was brought in as Special Counsel to the City to work on the Cliff's Dows site at the end of 2009. This presentation will be a truncated version of what we covered in the work session earlier, just hitting some of the highlights. From an operational history perspective, the Cliff's Dows site was a wood distillation plant, as well as another industrial use before that. The issues that pertain to the city right now deal with the wood distillation and the byproducts that were there. As you'll note in these slides that are up on the screen, these are two historic pictures, and what's interesting is that they both show some staining in Lake Superior from prior discharges from the site. The site itself, and I'm going to walk over here, this is the main industrial area. Some site activities took place on a more inland basis, and others took place north and south of that picture. So after the city acquired the site, it took on the obligations associated with the property owner. When the city acquired it, the city then had the ability to relocate Wright Street, to do what they wanted with Lakeshore, and do other things associated with that property. After they acquired it, in 2000 or late 1999, there was some investigation that was done at the request of the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, and that found certain areas of the site that were contaminated, and the site was known to have contamination before then. After that, there was some further investigation that was done, but part of the site has been sold off. If you look on the screen, the north nine acres were sold some years ago, and the south twenty-three acres have also been sold. Those are not the parts of the property that we are dealing with, even though that was one part, part of the property, part of the site. From a regulatory perspective, that's not the area that has the DEQ interest. This is a map from 2001, and the color coding on the screen shows different areas of contamination. The wood distillation process generates a number of different chemicals, including some of the constituents of gasoline, like B-Tex, benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylene, as well as phenols and other materials that are Tari-type materials. And this map that was done quite some time ago, or at least from data that was done some time ago, shows some of the areas of the property where the groundwater has chemicals that are of regulatory concern to the state. And you note that there's the yellow area that goes more towards the north, and then there's that blue area down towards the south. Those are essentially different chemical components in those areas. Along the right side of the picture is an area where there were some monitoring wells that were put in. The state is concerned from a regulatory perspective about the, what they call the groundwater-surface-water interface, and so they're evaluating what is migrating off the site. As part of the site investigation that was done, there was actual boring, there were borings that were conducted where a drill auger goes down into the ground and a soil sample is taken out. That gives the opportunity to actually analyze the soil that's right there. Because this is a former industrial property of some size, there are a number of areas on the site where it was very difficulty, very difficult to take corrings or to take borings. They would get what they called refusal, where the boring just would not go down any farther, because they were hitting concrete or something else. So as opposed to just going out there at random and trying to punch holes in the ground where there wasn't much success, the project team brought in a company to do some geophysical work. And a geophysical survey is something that's non-invasive, at least in terms of invasive, like we would think of normally punching a hole in the ground and taking out a soil sample. So they used electromagnetic devices to get various anomalous readings that they can then put onto this colored chart with kind of fuzzy borders, because you're getting an interpretation of the data as opposed to just a direct measurement. Based on this geophysical survey that was done, it was determined that there were some areas of the site that might serve as what was, be called a preferential pathway, or a way in which groundwater or contaminants in the soil might move more rapidly towards the lake. And there's, you know, a lot of things on this map in different colors that are... And what was found there. So if, if you, just keep in mind, and I'll just go right back up, if you look at this picture, where in the center it says Concrete or C-O-N-C Foundation, and then you go back up, you can see that area was all kind of in that light green. So they, they did some verification, the environmental team that was out there, and this would be a good point now for me to add, that Dennis Stackwitz from the city, as you all know on the commission, but the public may not know, is the team leader. I'm serving as Special Counsel to the City Commission and the city for the purposes of this project only, and Tri Media is the prime environmental consultant that's on by an outside company. So with the data that was obtained from the geophysical investigation, there was some ground truthing that was done, and you can see there's some test trenches that were done in various locations to determine what might be there based on the information that was observed from the geophysical map. And again, we were looking for preferential pathways or areas where there might be some significant areas of contamination. And we know that the site itself has a lot of diffuse tar and diffuse chemicals that were left over from the industrial operations, but in some of the areas where we did the trenching, again, based on the earlier geophysical investigation, as well as the data that Tri Media had gathered in the past, there were some areas where there was some significant tar that was found. And you can see, this is a real, it is tar, just like you'd think of road tar, you know, in terms of that type of viscosity. It can flow, it has an odor, and as a result of this work, the group was able to hone in on some areas where there could be quite a lot of material that was actually removed. And the significance of removing this material, and this is just a portion of material that may be at the site, but it was an area where there was a possible preferential pathway, area where there could be a, a speedier route off-site, an area where there were some anomalies that were found that needed to be further investigated, and of course, this tar material is the source material for a lot of the contamination that's at the site. So when you are able to remove, as was done here, what would be referred to as a continuing source, it's certainly a good thing as far as the Department of Environmental Quality is concerned, because this material, if left in place, could continue to leach into the groundwater. Now, lest anyone think that just because we removed some material, that's great, we're all, we're all done. It's not like a small site where maybe you had an underground tank, and you could remove some material and be done with it. This is a larger site, there's a lot of diffuse contamination through the site, but what has been done since then is continuing to monitor the groundwater to evaluate whether there would be an effect and what effect there might be from the removal of this limited source material. These are a couple of other pictures during the excavation of some of the Tari materials that were found and were also removed. And one of the things that's important to note here is while the city owns the property that they purchased, the site itself, the industrial plant, was much bigger than this, or at least it was somewhat bigger than this before the city acquired the property. And some of these materials were contained in either piping, or old wood pipes, or concrete pipes, or steel pipes, or other containers that were coming in from off-site, that is, coming onto the city property from property that the city does not own. And so, in the area there that was right near the border, the contractor under Tri Media's direction and the city's direction blocked off that piping so that that would help prevent materials from migrating onto the site. As part of the evaluation of the site itself, the project team put together for the city a remedial alternatives report that outlined a number of different options that the city might have in terms of how to evaluate and how to handle this site. And there are all different kinds of options that are out there. Some are better, some are worse, and many of them are a lot more expensive than others. But the regulatory driver here is groundwater that's moving off the site towards the lake that's above certain levels that the Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ, says needs to be addressed. And some of those levels are quite low, but be that as it may, the, the city is working in cooperation with the DEQ to fulfill the city's regulatory obligations to evaluate what is in the groundwater and what's migrating off-site. In terms of just a brief review of some of these alternatives, of course, the easiest, and I'm not going to necessarily go through all of these, but the easiest alternative to get your arms around is, of course, dig everything up and take it somewhere else to a landfill. Well, that's very, very expensive, and it wouldn't necessarily deal with the groundwater issue, because as I mentioned earlier, with these tars, their, their materials, the, the water can leach out of those materials, and these tars themselves can be heavier than water, so they can sink. They're dense, non-aqueous phase liquids, so they can sink down. So even if you took out all the soil, it's not going to be practical to be digging into the water table and digging materials out. There's other things that might be done, everything from bubbling air up through the soil and through the groundwater, and then vacuuming that out and treating it if it was necessary, pumping groundwater out and treating that, adding bio remediation enhancers or actual microbes. All of those have different prices associated with them, and many of them take a long time, and they're all very, very expensive. If the site is able to get to a point through us being able to demonstrate to the Department of Environmental Quality that we are below the regulatory criteria, then materials can be left in place. You don't need to barricade off the site to prevent anything from migrating off-site if what's migrating off is below a level where the DEQ says that it's permissible because it's not going to harm human health or the environment. So the direction to the project team thus far has been to continue to monitor, and again, I mentioned earlier that we've been working cooperatively with the DEQ, and cooperatively means that we have had a number of conversations, meetings, reports, communications, a dialogue in essence, with the DEQ. DEQ has regulatory things that they need to enforce against entities, including the city. They evaluate how people are going about dealing with their regulatory obligations, and since this project team was put together, the DEQ has indicated to us that they've been satisfied with the pace of the activity, and they have been approving of the work that we've been doing regarding the site. So this last bullet here, groundwater monitoring, is the option right now that the project team is looking at, again, to see whether we can continue to narrow the areas of concern at the site and ultimately be able to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the DEQ that we're below the regulatory criteria that would apply to the site. So I've discussed these, these issues already, except to the extent that the groundwater-surface-water interface is what the DEQ is looking at here. So that's the area where you can consider the groundwater, that water that's under the ground in the middle of the site, when it finally migrates off-site and actually impacts surface water, that's the regulatory part of compliance for us. So what's been done is evaluating both interior to the site with wells up in this area and down closer towards the shore, and then our GSI wells along here, which are close to the shore. Because there have been some changes within the last year of how the state is evaluating the GSI criteria, there have been some new opportunities that may present itself to the city, I'm going to go back one here, in terms of complying with the GSI criteria. Before, those criteria used to be very, very restrictive. Now, based on things that are being done in other states and as well as at the federal level, the DEQ is more willing to look at other... level, the DEQ is more willing to look at other, other GSI-related issues in terms of differences in the point of compliance, or how other things that you can do to demonstrate that you are able to meet their regulatory concerns. So what's our plan next, as we've talked about with the commission and as we've been working towards, is to try to narrow the areas of concern at the site. In fact, if I go back to this slide for a moment, originally, there were areas that were of more concern, both offshore and downshore. These areas now, where you see the red in particular, are evidence of us being able to focus the issue a little bit more based on having decent data. And one of the, the items that does bear repeating is that you can't just take one data point, go out and monitor a well once, and then expect from a regulator, regulator's point of view, the DEQ to say, okay, that's fine. They're looking to have reproducible data, they're looking to see trends, and that's one of the things that we've talked about with the commission, is continuing to monitor on a frequency that the DEQ is comfortable with. So we're getting the right type of information, but we're not monitoring every week because that would just be silly, just be spending a lot of money without any big benefit. But we're monitoring seasonally to be able to demonstrate to the department what type of trends. So if we're able to narrow that area down and focus the department in terms of their regulatory concerns regarding the site, that's certainly a goal, because then it also means that any alternative remedy that might be evaluated in the future could be looked at in a narrower, narrower area. So with that having been said, we have had discussions with the department, and our next step discussions with the department would be, again, trying to focus their areas of concern, potentially look at splitting off certain parcel, certain parts of this property, maybe a northern part, maybe a southern part, depending on what the data will support, to talk to the department about confirming that the city has met their obligations, at least in terms of the last request that was made to the city to get data, met their obligations for the, you know, certain areas of the site. Once we move forward on that, then have some further discussions with the city commission about possible reuse alternatives, and evaluate with the DEQ the extent to which they would be willing to allow additional uses at the site other than industrial. And that is sort of a truncated version of a longer presentation, which I hope hit the highlights. Dennis, is there anything else that you'd like me to add here?
Good job, thank you.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Mayor?
We don't see nothing at this time, so thank you very much for the presentation and the education for people that hadn't had a chance to really see what is all being done out there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And just before I go to presentation number five, I just want to apologize to you people. It's not you that are getting hot, the room is. You know, so it's not you if everybody thinks, hey, I'm getting awful hot in here, but it's, we're having trouble with the furnace, so if anybody wants to open any of the man doors, that'd be nice. Number five, presentation, asset management and the capital improvement plan by city engineer Keith Whittington. Thank you, Keith.
This is my annual presentation about our capital improvement plan, which directly relates to asset management. I took this slide here just more of a, an individual basis, but I'll have a home, I know this is an extreme case where it needs a lot of repair here, but it needs some help. We all have our own assets that individually we own, be it a house, a car, and so forth. When you look at municipal wide scale, which would be the city of Marquette, you can see the assets that we have here, 99 miles of water, we have 88 miles of sewer main, 90 miles of street, we have bridges, treatment plants, and so forth. And all these need to be taken care of in a responsible manner and repaired and, and replaced at times. What is the capital improvement program, the CIP? I'm not going to read this whole paragraph here, but if you look at the highlighted ones, you see it's a long-range financial planning tool, community needs, long-term future, improvements over time, and be able to afford them. So those are the key, the key words in that paragraph there. Why have a capital improvement plan? Well, to prevent reduced system failures, budget constraints, fiscal responsibility, improves reliability because it emphasizes detailed attention to our assets, reduces costs in the long term, that's the, the key word there is long term, informs the public what we own, and maintains a level to of our citizens that they're accustomed to. It also aids in its decision-making. The commissioner, or commission, commissions, actually the planning and city commission, the manager of sound data to look at. Residents understand our funding needs. There's our long-term planning again. Use limited funds where most needed, prioritization. Provides an incentive to look at alternate funding sources as in grants or even public or private partnerships. And it helps our DPWs far as when projects are, are being looked at as, as far as when they're coming up on the schedule there, so they're not having to do something and then we have to come back and tear it out again. So it's, it helps with the fiscal responsibility part of it. Project plan. The capital improvement plan was based on some infrastructure categories. One of these being the total street and utility reconstruction, other one being street structure upgrades, other one would be in our street heavy maintenance, which most of you see every year with our mill and overlay projects. Our gravel streets is in the plan. Government building maintenance is also in our capital improvement plan. This slide here just kind of shows what we, is in the capital improvement plan and what helps us to determine maybe where the needs are in the city. Without GIS, this has really been a godsend, I would say, that, that helps us out as far as determining where the priorities might be. I guess the important part of this slide is a look at how many miles of sanitary sewer we have that's over 100 mi, 100 years old. There's almost eight, eight miles worth right now. This is just a quick little graph here that shows our progress. I would say over the last four years, we, as far as the GIS, we have been getting better and better at being able to get our data into the GIS so we can make decisions here. As you can see, from 2008, 2009, we actually made some progress there with our replacement of sanitary sewer that's over 100 years old. Since then, it's been sort of flat. Same type of situation with our water main. If you look with the elliptical, right elliptical area there, you see that we have almost nine miles of water main that's over 100 years old. Here's another graph that shows our progress over the last four years. We're actually making steady progress there, as you can see by the graph. This is just some of the utility system issues we come across every day. We've got corrosion, shear breaks, roots that come in our, our sanitary sewers, pipe collapsing, infiltration, just to name a few. Also, as part of our capital improvement plan and asset management, we rate our streets every year. We do it on a system called the Pazer system. The system is basically rating the surface of our streets, 10 being excellent, brand-new street, and a 1 being a street that's failed. What's important there, if you look at this slide here for Pazer rating, fours and fives are the streets that we have in our system right now that are, we've got almost, we've got 26 miles worth of streets that are categories in a four or five. These are streets that are too important where they need heavy type of maintenance. And when I say heavy maintenance, that means a mill and overlay. If you look at the other elliptical circle there, you see how many miles of street we have there in the two and three range, which is in the very poor range. These streets need to be totally reconstructed. As of right now, we have about nine miles of that in the city. Just another graph to show our progress with twos and threes. It's actually kind of flat right now. I, I think what's happening here is some of our fours and fives aren't getting, we're not getting too quick enough, and they're actually falling down into the two and three category. If you look at our fours and fives, you do see steady progress. We've been maintaining about two miles per year, so we do have steady progress there. But the problem is, we've got 26 miles worth of streets that are fours and fives, and right now, our capital improvement plan goal is to replace two miles per year, so we're probably not going to get to all of them. Here's just an example of what we did last year on Forest Park Drive. You can see before and after picture. I think you see there's a big, big change there. We had lots of orangeburg laterals on the street that we had to replace also. This exhibit here just kind of shows a combination of putting all the data together in our capital improvement plan to come with, come up with priorities as far as street projects. This is another similar one for our heavy maintenance, which would be our mill and overlay type of projects. If you look here, this here chart or graph has some key, key areas in it. If you look at the fours and fives, which I call the window of opportunity, this is what you call a deterioration graph. So as the, as the age of the pavement gets older, you can see how it degrades over time. So you might start out as a 10, but over 40 years, you're going to be down to two or three. So the, the window of opportunity is where you want to catch it before it completely gets, till it gets to a point where it's in poor condition, then you've got to reconstruct it. So you either want to try to do preventive maintenance before fours and fives with crack sales, or if you do get into the fours and fives, you want to look at a mill and overlay if you can do that. This is what happens when you do a mill and overlay, and this example is Washington Street, which is actually going to be considered for this year. As you can see, once we do the mill and overlay here, it jumps it back up to nine, and extends the life of that pavement surface for another 12 years. So you could probably do this a few more times. The financial part of it, if you look at that window of opportunity right here in the middle there between fours and fives, you're looking at $375,000 a mile. If it drops below that, you're looking at total reconstruction, that's $600,000 a mile. If you look at trying to catch it before it gets down to a five, you're looking at like some seal colts or crack seals, and that's averages about $30,000, $30,000 per mile. We came up typical utility construction cost estimates. What we did there is we researched a previous year's bid tabs for average unit prices. We determined a tip of a cost per utility reconstruction foot and other types of maintenance feet and so forth, sidewalk feet. As far as the buildings, they've come up with a 2% of the aggregate current replacement value for those facilities that should be set aside to do maintenance on those, or study buildings. Replacement schedules, typical. Replacement rates are based on the service life expectancy and leaf of that existing utility. And I've got a couple of examples here. For example, we currently have 90 miles of street. The useful service life is about 45 years. So in taking that consideration, you should be doing two miles of street reconstruction per year just to keep up with the turnover. Another example is our water main. We've got 99 miles of water main, it's approximately got a 75 or even plus year life to it. So you're looking at having to replace one mile, that's actually a mistake there, but one mile of water main should be replaced every year. This is our typical, typical replacement schedule for the capital improvement plan based upon just those examples there. As you can see, sanitary one mile, water one, street two, and so forth, we should go down the list there. What are the challenges? We have maintenance of our data and personnel to be able to do it. The priorities is a big one, what are the priorities for the city? Funding is probably the biggest one right now, sufficient funding. Delaying maintenance and construction costs will increase our future costs. Management employee turnover, city and planning commission member turnover, and updating, revising, expanding the capital improvement plan, which is pretty much a continuous project in its own. Here's our asset management report card, just to see how we're doing here. If you look in this target goals column here, this is what capital improvement plan has been calling out. If you look at our average over here, this has been since 2008, 2012, we've actually been doing pretty good progress if you look at how we match up there with the target This slide here just is for more of a, an interest as far as funding options. We went through a work session with the planning commission, and they came up with their own options as far as funding projects. If you look at the column right here, this is what should be funded per our capital improvement plan. Staff recommendations would be, of course, to fund, fund it too if you had the money, but due to limited funding, that's not possible. So we came with a staff recommendations limited, which is based upon a bonding cap that the city commission has come up with. So this would be what would, what we could do with limited funding. Planning commission did the same thing based on limited funding. We had to do a little of reconciling for this, planning commission to get them down to that bonding limit, but this is what we came up with here. And that's all I have. Got questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Combenzi?
I guess, being on the planning commission, I'm pretty familiar with the capital improvement plan, and I know while I was on there, there was a shift strategically to kind of get caught up on the resurfacing as far as the total street reconstruction and, and take a slightly different approach to keep up and catch up. But all of us sitting here know that there's going to be a point when, like you said, those four and five Pazer rating streets are going to drop below what we can keep up with. And so, one question I have, has there been any talks on possible overlaying equipment sharing? Is that, is that something the other municipalities are looking at? Is there anything like that available as far as sharing equipment where we might be able to do it cheaper or get the county...
I guess I can't really talk for, for Scott, DPW director here, but I think that has been looked at in the past, and there's, the expense of it is just, is greater than having to hire a contractor to do it.
Okay.
Any other, Commissioner?
Well, just one final comment. I, I think, for me, this is a pretty high priority, and I, I know with the shrinking budgets coming, you know, from the state, it, it puts us in a greater compromise, but I, maybe it would be beneficial to, you know, have a work session, we talk about having a work session with the planning commission, but to really wrap our heads around this, this is one of our main responsibilities as a municipality. And I, I'm worried that if we sit up here and we see it every year, and we see that we're doing less and less and less, we're not being proactive. And it, is there a way, maybe with what I suggested, or any other way that you would suggest we could be more proactive to helping, helping you, helping the planning commission helping?
I guess that's difficult to answer there. I mean, it's just, it's based on the funding there, and, I mean, we can only do what we have for funding. I know we did, we did increase a little bit of what we usually put in for overlay projects and sort of the planning commission being aware of that. We try to need to get a little bit more done each year, so there is the thought process of putting a little bit more money aside to do that.
Anything else, Commissioner Combenzi? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I believe we do have a work session tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock on capital projects, and I suspect...
Room 103.
Room 103. Anybody interested in being there, 8 o'clock in the morning? And I guarantee we will be chewing through this material in great and very specific detail for a very long period of time, so you're very welcome to come. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Well, it's just, you know, looking at, at the list, and it's really hard to see some of those numbers, but, you know, as, as we look at the whole issue, you know, there's what could be done, you know, when you talk about eight miles of 200-year-old water pipe or sewer pipe, and then there's kind of what, what, what we're going to do based on, you know, the funds we have available. How would... How, how would you rate the progress we're making?
I think we're making good progress overall. I know compared to other municipalities, I think we're doing an excellent job here. Just the fact that we are trying to get some of our infrastructure taken care of is definitely a plus. I mean, we all know you can't have everything. You just try to chip away at it the best you can.
Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none at all, thank you very much Keith for that education and we'll see you tomorrow at 8:00 AM. Thank you. And at this time, we'll move to new member, welcome new member Caroline, Carolyn Craig, Board of Review. Carolyn?
There we go. Carolyn's signed up and volunteered to be on the Board of Review. She's very excited to get, hit the ground with her feet around and so we thank you very much. And with that, we'll give you a city pin to start off with.
Great.
And-
Thank you.
Before you leave, would you please say something to my fellow commissioners and the people in the audience?
I am very excited to get my feet wet with this. It's a new adventure for me. I retired recently and I have a few spare moments to, to do some new and some interesting and some fun things. So I am very much looking forward to, to being on the Board of Review and assisting with the tasks at hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming aboard. We appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, we'll move to appointment. Chad Lewis, Harbor Advisory Committee for term ending 6/1/2013. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Neme?
Thank your honor. I move that we appoint Chad Lewis to the Harbor Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1st, 2013.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
It would be probably beginning June 1st, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Let's say that he'll be-
Let's, let's appoint him to the appropriate term as determined by staff.
Okay. And second by Commissioner Stonehouse.
Right, I will second that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme, anything further?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Lewis for being willing to contribute his time to a city.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think he'll be a good and energetic member.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none? I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on a agenda item. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Anyone wishing to address the city commission at this time? Could you use this one here for a public comment?
Hello again. My name is Christine Pasola. I live at 112 Newberry and I was wondering if I could speak on agenda number 11.
Yes, you may.
Thinking about the recent announcement of a possible gift to our city of the land on Lake Shore, I am just wanting to encourage everybody to have a fabulous open mind and, you know, there's always challenges and situations that have to be dealt with, but I think it's a great opportunity for our city and I am hoping that you all will support it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the city commission at this time?
Michelle Butler, 3132 Lake Shore Boulevard, to reserve time on agenda item number 11.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Barb Kelly, I live at 430 East Arch and I would like to reserve time to speak on item number 11, please.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Bill Hetrick, I live at-
That's all right. Please state your name and address.
Bill Hetrick, I live at 613 Bruel. I'd like to speak on number 11.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Your Honor, I'm blanking on eight market drive. I'd like to reserve time on 11, please.
You bet. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
Carley Swanberg, 501 South Front. I'd like to reserve time to speak on number 11, please.
Caroline, Car-
Carley Swanberg.
Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
I'm Mona Lang, representing the Downtown Development Authority, and I too would like to reserve some time to speak on item number 11.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Yes, I'm Chris Centi and I would also like to reserve time to speak to item number 11, please.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
I'm Terry Shipansky, I live at 3000 Island Beach Road. I'd like to reserve time to speak on 11.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the city commission at this time?
Thank you, Berito, 350 East Ridge Marquette, to speak on item 11. These are my opinions. As part of the chamber renovation, we installed cheap ceiling mounted cameras that make us look like blobs of light up here. A far cry from the professional cameras once used at the proper angle, no less. We spent $109,000 for a result that isn't as good as what we had. Please improve the picture quality to at least a 1980s level. February 25th, we heard of a plan to renovate the Lower Harbor Park Pavilion to all season. Skaters would better enjoy a larger rink there at the more scenic location. The Commons Rink is too small unless expanded as described February 11th. The Parks Board Chair also mentioned a desired disc golf course, except please not to the demise of a natural area. Accommodating long flight lanes and the safety of passersby require ample space. Please cite the course carefully within our increasingly finite amount of green space. In your February 25th discussion of special legal counsel, members stated the same concerns as mine. Even the attorney nodded his head in agreement. Yet Mr. Coyne and Stonehouse motioned anyway to approve the hiring of additional counsel despite the lack of logical reasons. Ms. Compenzi said no contract is on file. She wanted to see the signed document to respect the financial interests of our taxpayers. Her request was ignored. In fact, she ignored her own request by voting to approve the contract anyway, as she did on the citizen comment time reduction. You're supposed to do the opposite. State that you're voting against the action solely for whatever reason may apply. This board hurries too much too often, which is substantiated by your notable lack of old business items on your agendas. Mr. Stonehouse feared Kennicott's big money as a reason to avoid any hauling issues, letting a foreign company have its way with us, he put it. Odd then how you and other entities bend over backward to accommodate them, such as County Road 595, their downtown office, and buying their way into the UP 200, even if not a direct consequence of the commission. But thanks to all their money, they're costing us up to $5,000 in equal, additional legal expense. So long as Fred uses the money excuse at public expense, he had best never endorsed that filthy mine as he did December 14, 2009, when he compared what he considered the lesser evil to this mine, being Asian carp and downstream chemical plants. He felt that we should focus on larger issues using the two worst-case scenarios to justify a less-than-ideal action. Strange in the three years since Asian carp has not appeared on the agenda to my knowledge. Mr. Ryan also favored the mine January 31, 2011, and County Road 595 on several occasions, especially August 28, 2012, using his platform as a commissioner to bolster the cause of an industry he's been involved in right out of the third world.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Please address your name and address, physical address.
I'm Kim Benzie, 306 North Sixth Street. I'd like to reserve time on item 7M, which was pulled from the consent agenda. Also, item 11, I'll just make a couple of comments. I fully support the efforts of Michelle and Clark Lambro's family and hope that with the guidance of Ken Sapsky and Bill Sanders and getting all the paperwork taken care of, that we can end up with a real nice project for the city. And also, I have comments on item 7Q, which is also on the consent agenda. And I don't know if, if I should just say a few comments right now rather than have you pull it off.
Yeah, we're not going to pull it so you can say what you want to say.
Okay, well, item 7Q is the lot split ordinance. And I spoke on it two weeks ago at the commission meeting. At the end of the meeting, Attorney Keith made some comments on the proposed ordinance. Commissioner Coyne asked a couple of questions on it and when Commissioner, Attorney Keith started to answer those questions and started to talk about the time that it was going to take for somebody to get a lot split through and started to talk about the planning commission involvement, the city commission involvement, and it was like, we're not keeping it simple. We're not, we're not doing something that could, 95% of it at least could be done administratively, probably in a period of 10 days. Now we're, we're probably looking at a two to three month period to get one approved. I think the ordinance, the way it's proposed, I realize that what you're going to do tonight is set a public hearing for two weeks from now, but if there are a lot of problems with the ordinance the way it's written, then what do you do two weeks from now? Do we send it back for revisions or what? So I, I just think we're, we're not rushing things because it's been a long time getting this to the agenda, but I think there's too many problems with it the way it's written. And it's not going to work too well for the, for the people that need to use it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
Good evening. I'm Don Potman, 1027 North Front Street. For some time, we've been hearing some mention by various commissioners that we Marquette need a new truck ordinance. I for one second the thought, however, I cannot initiate the process. Please commissioners, advise us what you have for views on how to best regulate truck traffic in our city. In my judgment, the ordinance should begin, be in place now and certainly should be in place prior to any agreements or contracts are finalized between the interested truckers and the County Road Commission. Perhaps if we wait too long, a judge could decide that the city did not act in a timely manner and that would be by default, we would lose. Perhaps, and please begin as I guess, under item M, I think that is in order, but it does not rise to the need for you folks to do all possible to protect the health, safety, and other conditions that are a part of the trucking problems. This need is separate and can't, and crucial to our city, irregardless of what you may or may not hear from the County Road Commission. I think you should get going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. It moved to consent agenda. City clerk?
Bear with me, commission, please. Item A, approve the minutes of the February 25, 2013 commission meeting. B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $1,336,846.76. C, authorize the city to act as the fiscal intermediary for Kiwanau Bay Indian Community for funding of $7,500 for the purchase of dual sensor smoke detectors for the Marquette City Fire Department. D, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary for Sioux-Saint Marie Tribe of Chipewa Indians for funding of $7,500 for the purchase of dual sensor smoke detectors for the Marquette City Fire Department. E, authorize the city to act as the fiscal intermediary for KBIC funding of $3,000 for the Marquette Regional History Center's family-friendly program. F, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary, intermediary for KBIC funding of $10,000 for Native Americans Service Learning Partnership Summer Institute at NMU. G, authorize the city to act as the fiscal intermediary for Sioux-Saint Marie Tribe of Chipewa Indians funding of $20,000 for Native American Service Learning Partnership Summer Institute at NMU. H, authorize the city to act as the fiscal intermediary for KBIC funding of $20,000 for the UP Children's Museum basic operational needs. I, authorize the city to act as the fiscal intermediary for KBIC funding of $25,000 for the Superior Watership Partnerships 2013 Summer Central Upper Peninsula Youth Conservation Corps Program. J, authorize the city to act as the fiscal intermediary for Sioux-Saint Marie Tribe of Chipewa Indians for funding of $25,000 for the Superior Watership Partnerships 2013 Summer Youth Program. K, determine there is no advantage to competitive bidding and approve the purchase of required bacon, brake and suspension parts for a frontline fire truck to promise a fire equipment of Antioch, Wisconsin in the amount of $3,647.70. L, award the bid in the amount of $14,875 at the unit prices bid to Corial Nurseries Incorporated of Munising, Michigan for tree planting services being the lowest best bid on a comparative analysis of pricing and meeting specifications. Direct the city manager to request a joint work session. Sorry, sorry. Item N, correct. Approve the certification of consistency for the HUD grant application and authorize the mayor to sign the certificate. O, accept the grant award from Michigan Department of Community Health in the amount of $24,000 for fluoridation equipment at the water filtration plant and authorize the manager to sign the contract grant agreement. P, charge special legal accounts, counsel with the task of review, research and develop options of response regarding correspondence with the EPA. Q, schedule a public hearing on ordinance number 600 for the March 25, 2013 city commission meeting. R, determine there is no advantage to competitive bidding and authorize the city manager to purchase mooring field equipment from Inland Marine.
Thank you, city clerk. With that, Commissioner Neme?
Thank your honor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item M, which has been pulled and item N, which there is potential conflict with one of our members.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne? There's a motion by Commissioner Neme, second by Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Neme, anything further?
Nothing further, your honor.
Commissioner Coyne? Any other commissioner? Seeing none? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes five to zero with Commissioner Coyne abstaining.
No, not yet.
Is that it?
Voted.
Okay. Thank you for the correction, city clerk.
One more motion?
Yes. Commissioner Neme?
I move that we approve item N and allow Commissioner Coyne to abstain since his wife is a member of the housing commission.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Ryan?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme, anything more?
Nothing further, your honor.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan?
Further comment?
I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Abstain.
Okay. Motion passes with Commissioner Coyne abstaining. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we move to unfinished business. Prescott Marine, Marina dredging Phase One project. City clerk?
Thank you, sir. Background, plans have been developed for the first phase of the Prescott Marina dredging project. Phasing for this project was based on input from the Harbor Advisory Committee, Prescott Park Advisory Committee, Planning Commission and the City Commission. The phase of this work will consist of dredging the harbor area south and west of the current pier system, hauling dredging materials to an upland site at a former roundhouse property and the removal of the southerly, southerly pier. Bids for the project were opened on February 28, 2013. Five contractors responded to our request for bids. Results are summarized below. Fiscal effect, Prescott Marina Phase One project was approved under the fiscal year 2011/12 budget. The city has secured a Michigan Department of Natural Resources water raise grant for 50% of the construction cost or $238,979.50. Recommendation, award a contract for Phase One of the Prescott dredging project to Veltin Company Incorporated in the amount of $477,959 based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ryan?
I move we award a contract for Phase One of the Prescott dredging project to Veltin Company in the amount of $477,959 based on the quantities and unit prices bid.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Much-needed project. We've been talking- We've been talking about it for some time. We're awarding the bid to the lowest bidder, and so I think it's good to move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Seeing none? I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. With that, I think what, due to the fact that it's pretty warm here, I'm going to move number 11 up next, because there's quite a few people that want to address this. And if the commissioners don't have any objection, I'll move number 11 up at this time. City clerk, can you read number 11, please?
Thank you, mayor. Background. At the February 11, 2013 commission meeting, Michelle Butler approached the city to donate approximately 14 acres of land adjacent to Lake Superior and the Dead River for the purpose of developing a public park. If supported, the property would be acquired through Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Land Acquisition Grant due April 1, 2013. For a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application to be considered, the city must hold a public hearing to obtain community comments. An advertisement was posted in the Mining Journal outlining the project and encouraging public interest and ideas to the proposed project and application. Comments will be recorded in the minutes and included when the application is submitted. The commission will consider the final MNRTF grant application and resolution of support at its March 25, 2013 meeting. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation: Hold a public hearing, public comment period, as required by the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, to acquire approximately 14 acres to develop a park adjacent to Lake Superior and the Dead River. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Do you want to hear the public comment?
Sure. We'll do some public comment first. Thank you. How do you, I start putting them down in order, but I won't do that, so whoever wants to come up and address the commission at this time, please come on up, state your name, fiscal address, please.
Michelle Butler, 3132 Island Beach Road, Marquette. I'm here tonight to encourage you to support the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant for the property acquisition of Clark's Park. This park is going to be an evolution. You know, it's a work in progress, and the ultimate goal is to provide the citizens of Marquette with 1,500 feet of additional beachfront property, a Clark-Lambros Beach Park. The advantages to the city owning this land are numerous. The trail networks, land and water, will be enhanced. This area of land was never considered as a trail connector because it's always been held privately. With the property moving into the city hands, trails will be connected all the way to the island and also through the waterways. This project, with this property becoming part of the city, is also an opportunity to create a safe kayak launch with access through the Dead River area into Lake Superior and the harbor area. To accomplish this park, we need to work together as a team. There will be many questions, of which I hope to answer a few with my comments here tonight. First, this property is environmentally safe and clean. There's a historical report that I've shared with the city. We also have a report from Coleman Engineering that had done soil borings for us in previous years. Everything has come back with no contamination on the site. The property is significant in size. It will also include part of Lot 7 of the industrial park that is near the water's edge for the trail purposes. Our plans include a holdout piece of this parcel of property that will be available for future development. Thus, we'll still be having property that would support the city tax base, and this is important to both the city and the trust fund. Currently, the goal is to be able to submit the grant by the deadline of April 1. We will not have final answers or approval until late fall. This gives us over six months to work together on the park and design and come up with the amenities that we feel are going to be important to the city. The goal is to create a low-maintenance park with a very safe beach area. Depending on the grant funding and the costs of the amenities, the hope is that we will be able to establish some type of an endowment with money that may be left over once we've done everything that we hope we can. If this is possible, that's what we would like to do, but we aren't going to know until we really sit down and have the work sessions. We've also been approached by a local service club that is interested in looking at taking this on as a potential project. I don't know the to the degree because I just got the request over the weekend, and we haven't had a chance to talk. But they want to be involved and help with this. I feel very comfortable with Ken Chapsky and Bill Sanders. Excuse me. I feel that they're very competent, and, you know, I think they're working on behalf of all of us because they really believe strongly in Marquette, as we all do. You know, our motive as a family is to give back to the community. Clark supported this community through his businesses, from bimbos, which many people remember, to vangos, then Clark's Landing, to the Steirnstein. He really wanted to do something to honor his son, and we really want to do something to honor both Clark and Clark Jr. I hope that you will help us be a part of this legacy by supporting the grant application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next one wishing to address the city commission? Or do you want me to call your name?
Mona Lang, 175 Pineview Drive in Marquette. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate that for years and years and years, it has always been an objective of the city to obtain the majority of the lakefront in public holdings for the public. And this is an opportunity to have privately-held lakefront move into public domain. It'll give access to the public. And also, it's just one more thing that makes Marquette special is the public access to the lake. It's something that this community cherishes. And if a DNR trust fund land acquisition grant can be obtained to help forward this purpose, I would encourage you to support that grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening. My name is Barb Kelly. I live at 430 East Arch. And tonight, I am speaking for the Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee. But before I start, I just wanted to say that I was thinking on the way here tonight how great the roads were. And so I just wanted to thank the city and the Public Works Department. I know they, I heard them in the middle of the night last night. I know they work hard, and I was totally amazed at how clear the roads were and how huge the snowbanks were. So I extend my thank you. I'm sure I speak for many others. Michelle Butler's potential gift of lake shore property in memory of Clark-Lambros and Clark Jr. is magnanimous and compelling. The area currently under discussion is neglected and filled with overgrown vegetation and haphazard parking. And it is along Marquette's designated scenic drive along Lake Superior, which culminates at Prescott Park. Marquette has historically committed itself to acquiring beachfront property so that it is contiguous, and this property fills in a large gap. Michelle's gift fits into the master plan, according to the Planning Commission's last meeting, which I attended. The Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee supports shoreline acquisition and beautification of property within the city. We would hope the public hearing tonight will reflect all citizens' concerns and address any financial or liability issues connected with this acquisition, so that the process is transparent in the city's best long-range interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Bill Hetrick, 613 Bruhl. The, I support the application for the Michigan Trust Fund Grant. This is a unique opportunity, not only for additional shoreline, but I echo what Barb said, that this is the gateway to the Prescott Park, which is a tremendous park for the city of Marquette. But this truly is an opportunity that has a long-neglected area along the Dead River. So the shoreline is one thing, but the Dead River is definitely an opportunity to enhance the public park system.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening. My name is Carol Lee Swanberg, 501 South Front Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Lake Superior Community Partnership. I am here to express our support of the proposed Clark's Park. As longtime collaborators and supporters of the Iron North Heritage Trail and Trail Systems, we do feel that this proposed project does have a potential for a wonderful addition to that. It takes privately-held land and puts it into the public realm, which does give us the opportunity to enhance that trail, and we do support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address the city commission at this time?
Terry Chapanski, 3000 Island Beach Road. Obviously, I support the grant application. I think it's a very heavily-used beach and area. We put a park there and do it properly. I think we make it a lot safer for a lot of the folks that will be using it. It's a good opportunity for the city to make a contiguous beachfront, and I can't think of anything against it, honestly. I can't. There's no reason whatsoever that I can think that we couldn't use it appropriately and make a real positive impact on the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Hello. I'm Chris Zenti, 900 Lake Shore Boulevard, Marquette, Michigan. And I just want to briefly support the application. I've been impressed with Michelle Lynn Clark's generosity and commitment to improving the quality of life for the citizens of Marquette. I couldn't help but think about Bernard Shaw's statement about "one must care about a world that one will never see." Clark and Michelle discussed this park. Clark will never see the park like some of us may see it, but he wanted to be sure, and along with Michelle, that their gift can be enjoyed by futures, future generations to come. And I am very grateful as a citizen that there are people like Michelle and Clark and to make the world a better place and our city better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Hank Jefferto, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. This item ought to have been moved up regardless of the hot room, but out of respect for the number of people waiting to speak. Clark's Park is the most gracious gift our city has received in at least 20 years, and it's such a critical location, by all means authorize this grant application. Akin to the lighthouse property that we should all live long enough to enjoy access to, the Clark property is an already gorgeous segment of our shoreline. From a natural standpoint, we have little to gain that isn't already there. Of utmost importance is to preserve or even improve in some spots, as mentioned tonight, the natural integrity of the parcel while fulfilling the donor's wishes. Experts, including Frederick Olmsted, generally design parks with cultural amenities clustered in central locations, usually closest to access points. Farther reaches of the park are kept natural with carefully-designed transitions between the two types of areas. In this case, it's important to preserve the Lake Superior side, the entire riverway, and a wooded buffer along the west border of Lake Shore Boulevard. The shape of the Clark parcel limits the possibilities for sighting the cultural amenities. Where the south end of the property, west of the Boulevard, wider, this would provide the most suitable area. Because the northern half of the inland portion is much wider, this becomes a more advantageous site. The challenge then becomes to provide an adequate buffer between the Dead River and the amenities. There is also an incentive to provide reasonable access from the picnic area and restrooms to the river and to the beach. Just please account for the Lake Shore Task Force recommendation that no building occur on the lakeside of the Boulevard. Upon first moving to Marquette in 1992, I'd pole into the short dirt entrance just south of Dead River, admiring the beauty while at the same time cursing that awful power plant. Who knew that in 2013, we'd receive this priceless opportunity for many more people to enjoy the site, including children, almost beneath those belching smokestacks? Let us please provide a maximum buffer to shield the majority of our new park from an atrocity that never had any business being there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening. You're Melankin 8 Market Drive. I'm going to be in the opposite direction. I really want to have the commission look at the realities of what we have here. And I really thank Michelle for putting this offer together, but there are a lot of other things that we need to look at as a commission. As City Engineer just mentioned to us, we already have 22 parks in our community. We have population of 20,000, give or take, so we do have a lot of park. By having this land donated respectfully, then that becomes off the tax rolls. Right now, it's generating $6,300 in taxes. And so if there's a little portion left, the larger portion is really given away. And so we're looking at it becoming off the tax rolls. We're also looking at a lot of details to be worked out. There's a road right now, so if you put buildings and beach houses and what have you, you have a road that you may have to relocate as a safety issue for people going to Lake Superior. And so that's an issue that may have to be looked at. Then the continuing maintenance of this fabulous park, who is going to take care of that? Will there be monies left over to take care of for the next 100 years or 150 years or whatever length of time? And if there isn't, then what are we doing with our bike paths and the parks that we already have, the 22 parks? Are we taking money off of those parks to help the new park? And so those are a lot of questions that really need to be answered before we jump into saying, with the warm fuzzies. And we all have warm fuzzies for donating land and donating a park in our community. But we have to look at some of the statistics, what the cost, the long-term cost for the city is. The number's been thrown around for the 14 acres in a million-plus range. If that was truly on a tax rolls, it would generate more than $6,300. And if there was a business on that or some kind of entity, it would generate a lot more than that in taxes. So the potential of having city income taxes is a lot greater than the expenses. So I just encourage that you look at all the avenues on this warm, fuzzy feeling, rather than just the surface portion that really looks warm, fuzzy. But there are a lot of hidden costs here, a lot of details to be worked out. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none? I'll close this portion of public comment. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Coyne?
I move that we hold a public comment period as required by the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund to acquire approximately 14 acres to develop a park adjacent to Lake Superior and the Dead River.
Is there a second?
Attorney has his finger up, so.
I was just going to add that we've just held the public comment portion of it. Those comments are to be recorded. I'll defer to the architects and to Carl, but that's my understanding. Under the grant application process, we hold the public comment portion. We make sure those minutes, our minutes, reflect those comments, and then at the next meeting, the application itself will be considered by this commission, and those comments will be part of that grant application. Is that your understanding?
Is that all right, Commissioner Coyne? You object to that?
No, I don't object, but I would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to respond to that. I don't have any problem with that opinion, but if I made the motion because the way the recommendation is written is hold a public comment, if I am a citizen, I, and I'm a commissioner, I did not regard this as recommendation. This is a public comment period. It is a public comment period, but it is not stated to the public saying, if you object or if you are in favor of it, we're going to have a public comment period. This is not a public comment period, so I don't agree with that because of the wording of the motion. That's my opinion.
That's, I understand that. And there is going to be a further hearing on this on the 25th of March. It's just my understanding from speaking with those, with Mr. Sanders, who I met with, who put this grant application together, is this was supposed to be the public comment period. Now, if Mr. Chapsky or someone else is in the audience and can address that, I would like to hear from them, because this was my understanding, that the public comment was to be taken at this time.
Well, can I respond? If that is your understanding, the recommendation on the agenda ought to be, this is a public comment, and it's not.
Can Mr.? Can Mr. Chapski?
Yeah, come on up for a minute.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ken Chapski. I'm a partner in the firm Sanders and Chapski Associates, and I'm here on behalf of Bill Sanders, who's really the expert on this issue and regarding Michigan National Trust Fund applications, and that Mr. Sanders happens to be in Alaska this week and unable to make this meeting. It is my understanding, and I guess I'm a bit confused, that yes, this was intended to be the public, the chance for the public to comment on this proposed application, and it was advertised as such in a public advertisement in the paper. And again, that was my understanding of the procedure for this evening, so...
Stand by for a minute. Commissioner Coyne?
I don't care. I'm not, I'm just not making a big deal out of it, but I think there's a point that's made that I just stated. The public comment we've had today is 10 in favor, 1 none. We've yet to hear what the commission says, but I suspect that's going to be six more people in favor of it. But I don't want anybody to come by and say, "Well, you didn't have a public comment period." If you're comfortable with that, that's fine. If the commission is comfortable with that, I don't have a problem, but I just raised that as an issue. I'm going to make a comment. Every time I ride my bike or drive by that area, I look at the rock that's cared for by the Labonte family, and I look at the little area where you can get into the Dead River on that property, and I've often thought, "What a beautiful place. Wouldn't that be nice if it were a park?" And my wild imagination, I never thought anybody would come by and say, "I'd like to give you 1,500 feet of Lake Superior." Has anybody had that happen to them recently? I never have. Or, and by the way, it's also a lot of stuff on the Dead River. Never had that. And this is a wonderful opportunity. I think one of the concerns was raised about it becoming non-tax-producing. I've talked with Michelle, and this whole property that they have is not being given. There's a retained piece of property that is developable for homes, and I was doing some math, I'm sorry while you were talking, that probably if there were five homes built there, it would increase the tax revenue probably by a factor of 10 over what it is now. And I also think that it needs to be respected, that the landowner wishes to do this. I mean, that's, the landowners aren't saying, "I'm going to sell this." The landowners are saying, "We want to do this," and I think it behooves the commission to say, "Yes, great. Let's have, if this is the public hearing, our comments section, fine. If we need another one, fine." But I am very strongly in favor of it. I think it opens up new birding opportunities, new access to Lake Superior by kayaks, trails, as we see in a couple of other agenda items. It connects a lot of trails, so it's a great thing, and I would hope other commissioners would feel during this period of public comment to comment, so we at least inflate the numbers a little bit, even though it wasn't advertised right. Thank you.
So Commissioner Coyne, you did make the motion then, and Commissioner Combenzi, you made the second, so you have the floor?
Well, I'd just like to add that as one of the commissioners in the Friday morning agenda-stating meeting, several of us had similar questions to Mr. Lincolnon, and so if it would be appropriate to maybe ask Dennis to expand on those, but a lot of them are the details that were being asked, that, you know, some of us have to think about as the seven of us that sit up here and, you know, have to make the decision. And it was a little bit confusing, at least to me, but understanding that this is just to apply for the grant, not to approve it at the next meeting. We're just applying for the grant, and I think if Dennis could explain a little more on that, at least what he told us at the meeting Friday, that would be beneficial.
Are you talking about Dennis Stackowitz, the Community Development Director?
Trying to refresh my memory on what the questions were Friday morning. But Commissioner Combenzi is correct. This is an initial application. I can speak from a staff perspective that the city attorney and Carl and I and the city manager have looked at this purely from the aspect of making sure that all legal obligations or legal protection of the city is being honored in this transaction. We offer no opinion as to whether it's a good or bad thing for the community. That's entirely up to the commission. And two items that we had questions on in particular concern, we're dealing with the environmental condition of the property. We just had an hour-long work session on Cliffstyle that we've been doing for a number of years. And then there was the concern of the property owner and how the property gets developed. It's, you know, this is being gifted to the city as a legacy, so if we give it to the city, what we don't want, what the property owner doesn't want it to be is just a simple land transaction, and then nothing ever happens to the property. So those were two basic, you know, legal issues that we looked at that brought concern. Those are addressed once the application is submitted. If the application receives conditional approval, there's a time period from April 1st all the way through October where there are a number of things that have to happen and have to be approved by the state of Michigan before the grant can move forward. One of those things is environmental due diligence on the property. The state of Michigan, as well as the city, doesn't want to inherit a contaminated piece of property. The state of Michigan also doesn't want to spend trust fund dollars on contaminated property, so there is a time period for an environmental assessment to be done, as well as a title search. Both of those items have to be reviewed and approved by the state of Michigan, so that checks the box on the environmental concern. The other concern was some type of development agreement, and that is currently being drafted by Bill Sanders and worked into some deed language that will require a little bit of back and forth with the city commission, again, if the application is approved. And the reason the state puts this in that window is because all of that activity and fees, I shouldn't say all, I'll say most of it, is reimbursable by the grant, so there's no cost to the municipality. In other words, you wouldn't want to be spending a bunch of money on a baseline environmental assessment and then throw a grant application in and not get the grant. You know, they structure it so if you are selected for the grant, you have a time period, and they also have a mechanism for reimbursement of those things to work out as well.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Combenzi, anything else?
And one of the other questions I had was the road and the easement, and I saw, I know there is discussion being looked into, you know, with that, and I don't know if Bill or Ron want to add anything, but...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, only that, part of the challenge that you're seeing with this application is the timing and the actual checklist is dictated by the state, and it has to happen during a certain period of time that really culminates by April 1st. And so a lot of the nuances in the way, as Dennis has described it, the pre-approval and conditional approval of the purchase, pending all of the standard kind of things that go along with title searches and environmental remediation, all of that is what we're engaged in right now. Michelle very kindly noted, there are a number of other groups that are interested in some way helping the city partner to develop this park. A lot of the specific costs, a lot of the specific accoutrements of that site, if all of this works out, would come under a developers' agreement that would look very similar to the kind of things that we have in place for development of the skateboard park or development of other kind of public-private spaces. And we've started that discussion with Bill Sanders and Michelle. A big part of that, of course, is it's not something that the city dictates, and it's not something that the potential seller would dictate. It's something that we've got to come to agreement on, what the alignment of the road might be, what kind of accoutrements, like the bathrooms or the bathhouses or the paths or things like that that would be on site, might be included in that agreement. And so pending approval by the state of Michigan, we'll get to more formal parts of that agreement. We'll put that in front of the city commission, and there'll be fertile opportunity for other groups to have comments on form, fit, and function as we go forward. But let me turn it over to Ron to maybe give the legal perspective, too.
No, actually, I agree with all of that. I guess what I was going to do, and I wanted to respond to Commissioner Coyne, in the Mining Journal on Friday, there was a published notice of this meeting tonight for public comment. What happened here is a little bit of a form over substance. If we had read this agenda item, we normally do, and there would have been a motion to hold a public comment period, it would have happened after that motion was adopted, but what happened was the public were asked to comment before the actual agenda was, you know, moved and approved. So it's a form over substance kind of thing. The other thing I was going to say is, the application itself will be before this commission on the 25th, and I'm sure that there will be people on the 25th who will also comment on it. So we might actually have a couple comment periods. They will all be recorded and certified and go in with this application if that's what the commission decides to do.
Commissioner Combenzi, you still have the floor. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, I think it's all pretty much been answered. Back when Commissioner Coyne and the city attorney were going back and forth, the only thought that crossed my mind is they're both right, you know, and I think they're both honorable people and trying to do their job, and it was confusing for me as well. I don't think it was real clear that to some of us that this was typical as a public meeting, which we would typically, public hearing we would typically conduct, so. And the fact you just explained that we will again have a chance to talk about this on March 25th, so I'm going to reserve most of my comments, but again, I'm very pleased to see this going forward, and I think it's a real opportunity for the city of Marquette.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I'm persuaded by our city attorney's argument, "Form over substance," with his explanation, and therefore, I'm going to withdraw my motion, because there really isn't a motion needed.
Is there a motion not needed?
The public hearing has been held, so I don't think there's a motion needed, unless Mr. Sanders or Mr. Chapski feels otherwise. Okay.
So with Commissioner Coyne removing his motion, is that all right with Commissioner Combenzi?
And that's fine, because the chair didn't state it, so it's withdrawn.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to agenda number nine, BP 13-02, wastewater treatment plant boiler stack replacement bid award. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the project is for the replacement of an existing boiler stack that was installed in 1986 and has failed due to corrosion. Bids were received and opened on February 19th, 2013, for the replacement of a boiler stack located at the wastewater treatment plant. Four bidders responded, with Dressler Mechanical being the lowest bidder, meeting specifications in the amount of $11,900. Received bids are as follows: Jamar Company, Escanaba, Michigan, $12,900. United Contractors, Marquette, Michigan, $14,900. Dressler Mechanical, Marquette, Michigan, $11,990. K&amp;M Industrial, Escanaba, Michigan, $19,655. Fiscal effect, $11,990 is available within the Marquette area wastewater treatment. Fiscal year 1213 repair and maintenance budget. Replacement contingency funds will be used to offset the cost. Recommendation, award bid 13-02 for boiler stack replacement at the wastewater treatment plant to Dressler Mechanical, being the lowest bid meeting specifications for an amount not to exceed $11,990. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to award bid 13-02 for boiler stack replacement at the wastewater treatment plant to Dressler Mechanical, being the lowest bid meeting specifications for an amount not to exceed $11,990.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Ryan?
No further comments.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose. Motion passes 6 to 0. Thank you. We'll move to agenda number 10, services agreement to MJ Van Dam Trucking, Inc., bio-solids disposal and applications. City Clerk?
Thank you, sir. Background, all municipalities that generate bio-solids are responsible for the management and end use of the material. MJ Van Dam Trucking Incorporated has been the city's sole contractor for bio-solids land applications since 1995. A market survey was conducted, and a competitive bidding process was determined not to be in the city's best interest because of the limited number of vendors with specialized tools and expertise. MJ Van Dam Trucking, Inc. is currently under contract to provide seeding and mulching services with Cliff's Natural Resources. As part of the reclamation process, the addition of bio-solids is a key component for a successful program. The contractor's familiarity with CNR properties, regulations, and reclamation practices is a critical requirement for success. Attached is a cost proposal that was presented to the MAWAB for review and recommendation. The MAWAB unanimously approved the proposal and recommended the proposal be brought to the city commission for consideration and approval. Fiscal effects, the Marquette area wastewater treatment professional and contractual budget contains sufficient funds for this service. Recommendation, determine that there is no advantage to competitive bidding and approve a contract with MJ Van Dam Trucking, Inc. at the per-unit cost and conditions in the attached proposal, and authorize the city attorney to prepare an appropriate contract. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we determine there is no advantage to competitive bidding and approve a contract with MJ Van Dam Trucking at the per-unit cost and conditions in the attached proposal, and authorize the city attorney to prepare an appropriate contract.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
You know, this is something we have to dispose of, and this is the system that's worked effectively for us in the past. It is the recommendation of our staff that we continue. I think it makes sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I certainly can't say anything more than Commissioner Ryan did on that. I think you covered it well.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a couple of questions. First is, how much are we talking about that this would cost? And second, how, what is the length of the contract that we're looking at?
Currently, we're looking at a year contract, probably till October 1st of 2014. For Van Dam services, we're looking at approximately $84,000. We will complement the disposal by using in-house staff for maybe doing some local applications as some other agricultural fields come up. So this is sort of a component of the whole bio-solids program.
How much do we have budgeted for this contract?
Typically, I'd budget about $175,000. With the new storage facility, I'm looking at bringing that down to about $120,000 for next year.
Well, I appreciate your attentiveness in reducing this cost, but I don't know. I guess I really would like to see this bid out, because we, you know, for years and years and years, the same contractor's been doing it. We have no measure of whether the cost is appropriate or inappropriate. It's a fairly expensive contract, but I won't support this, but I'm glad that it's only for one year, and perhaps next year, maybe we can bid this out and test the market with actual bids and...
If I could, I have talked to other contractors who specializes in the services. There's a lot of specialized pieces of equipment. These other contractors are from lower Michigan, and to provide the service that's approved in our residuals management plan, it's, the application is a part of it. It's also the seeding, the mulching, and a big component of it is, right now, Van Dam's under contract with Cliff's Natural Resources for that service. And I have talked to the other contractors about the cost, you know, per unit. We're getting a very fair deal. I have talked to some other local trucking companies, and I'm comfortable with the amount we're paying. But we will definitely continue, you know, to bid it out if the circumstances, you know, arrive.
Just an add in the paper, there may be some companies you're not aware of that would be interested in doing the service, and the paper might be good to solicit bids.
Anything further, Commissioner?
That's all. Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose?
Nay. No.
Motion passes 5 to 1, showing Commissioner Naimi opposing. Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Agenda Number 12, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background: At the November 28, 2011 meeting, the city commission approved the five-year recreation master plan. Excuse me. Establishing permanent restroom facilities at Harlow Park, Prescott Park, and Williams Park are cited as priority. The costs for the restroom projects are estimated at $400,000. Staff has researched grant options that may help offset the city's capital expense. The Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund is a funding source that is best suited for these projects. City staff is currently working on the MNRTF application. If successful, the grant will fund up to 74% of the project cost with a 26% local match. The local match may be either in-kind or cash contribution. Any local match not being in-kind would require the support of the general fund. The application process requires city commission approve resolution of commitment attached. The final application is due by April 1, 2013, to meet this year's grant cycle. Fiscal effect: The MNRTF would require a 26% match or $104,000, which would include in-kind or cash contributions. The general fund would be required to provide any cash match. Recommendation: Adopt a resolution of commitment and support an application for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund to construct permanent restroom facilities at Harlow Park, Prescott Park, and Williams Park and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives: Not submit the grant application.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move we adopt a resolution of commitment and support an application for a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund to construct permanent restroom facilities at Harlow Park, Prescott Park, and Williams Park and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor.
Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
I think this is a worthwhile investment. You know, I look at Harlow Park, you know, that park is used extensively by families. It's serviced now by porta-johns, basically. I know there are issues with the restrooms at Prescott and Williams Park as well. It's not a small expenditure, and I'm not questioning that at all. It is a significant expenditure. But the opportunity to get 75% of it funded by a state grant, I think, is a real attractive opportunity as far as I see it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Neme?
I agree with Commissioner Ryan, and I second his comment about getting the majority of the project funded by grants, and I commend our staff for following up on this and providing some machine facilities at least cost to our taxpayers.
Thank you, Commissioner Neme. Any other commissioner with any comment? Commissioner Kebensi?
I have just a question for staff, and that is that we are, it looks like we're putting in two applications to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. Is that typical? Have we done this before? Or does it hurt our chance one way or another with the two we're putting in? Just out of curiosity.
No, Commissioner. The Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund has two pools of money. One is for acquisition, and the other one is for project grants. And so the acquisition grant is the one you heard for the Clark Park property. The one that you're looking at with this agenda supplement is for projects.
Is that all right? Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Number 13, Michigan Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Application. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background: At the November 28, 2011 meeting, the city commission approved the five-year recreation master plan. Extending the multi-use path on Holly Street to Powder Mill Road is cited as priority. The cost for the multi-use path extension project is estimated $200,000. Staff has researched grant options that may help offset the city's capital expense. The Michigan Land and Water Conservation Fund grant is a funding source that is best suited for this project. City staff is currently working on the MLWC application. If successful, the grant will fund up to 50% of the project cost with a 50% local match. The local match may be either in-kind or cash contribution. The vast majority of the path extension lies within property owned by the Market Board of Light and Power. The city will be asking the MBLP to participate in a portion of the local match. Any local match not supported by the MBLP or in-kind contributions would require support of the general fund. The application process requires the city commission to approve a resolution of commitment attached. The final application is due by April 1, 2013, to meet this year's grant cycle. Fiscal effect: The MLWC would require a 50% match or $100,000, which could include in-kind or cash contributions. The general fund would be required to provide any cash match not supported by the MBLP. Recommendation: Adopt a resolution of commitment and support an application for Michigan Land and Water Conservation Fund grant to construct a multi-use path extension on Holly Street to Powder Mill Road and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives: Not submit the grant application.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt a resolution of commitment and support an application for a Michigan Land and Water Conservation Fund grant to construct a multi-use path extension on Holly Street to Powder Mill Road and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Well, I think this is just like the number of the other items we've dealt with tonight. And again, I commend staff for going out and seeking these grants. Tomorrow morning, we're going to be agonizing over what we're going to do with capital money, what projects we're going to fund. And when the staff does things like this, it lets us use our money a lot further and for other projects that are going to be needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I guess the way of looking at it is that, you know, those projects like these really do enhance our quality of life in the city. And as Commissioner Neme indicated, I really greatly commend staff for their aggressiveness in going out and finding ways to do this with grant money. And, you know, as we sit down tomorrow and then really wrestle through the nitty-gritty of the capital program, this is going to seem like an easy decision, I think, based on some of those that we'll be fighting tomorrow. So again, I heartily thank staff for their efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Any other commissioner wishing to address this agenda? Any other commissioner seeing none? I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Agenda N. Is that correct? Commissioner Kebensi, N.
M for Mary.
Okay, thank you. Did you, City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Was Item 7M now Item 14, proposed joint meeting regarding an alternative truck route?
Yes.
Background: During the special commission meeting on January 31, 2013, the city commission directed the city manager to evaluate and pursue options to address the need for a long-term bypass outside the city of Marquette. Fiscal effect: None by this action. Recommendation: Direct the city manager to request a joint work session with the Market City Commission and Market County Board of Commissioners to discuss the need for an alternate truck route. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioner Kebensi?
Thank you. I just would like to ask the commission, instead of going to the county first, I think it would be in our best interest to try and sit down with the township and see if the county road commission would like to sit down with us to talk about this. I had the opportunity to talk to one county commissioner this weekend, and after receiving the email from staff this week, it doesn't sound very promising to go that route at this time. However, I did get to talk to two township officials who are very eager to sit down collectively, their whole body and our whole body, because I think they have some similar concerns that we do as far as the safety, the amount of traffic, and of course, the roads used. Even though they don't own those roads, they would like to sit down with us. And I would like to take a little different approach on this and sit down, city to township first, to build a strong relationship, see where they're coming from, invite the county road commission, if the county commission would be accepting to that, and start there. I think it would serve the city commission better. I think it would prove a positive step in going forward with this and make sure we're bringing everyone to the table that needs to be there, as much of the land is in the township.
Thank you. Mr. Kebensi, you had wanted to address this item.
I'm Kebensi, 306 North Sixth Street. When you held a meeting at commission chambers here a couple of months ago on County Road 595, I sat through the meeting and listened to everything. At the end of the meeting, I talked to Jim Iwaniki, the superintendent engineer of the county road commission, for about five minutes. And he said he is very willing to sit down with the city and Marquette Township to discuss your thoughts on a bypass or a different route. However, he was not going to initiate such a meeting. So that was his take on it, and I kind of think that maybe the road commission and the township are the places to start. The county board, I don't know at what point you actually bring the county board in on this, unless you get some kind of an agreement worked out tentatively first, when it cuts to financing, probably. So, that's my comments.
Thank you very much, sir. Commissioner Ryan?
I agree with Commissioner Kebensi. It seems like, you know, we're calling a meeting to talk about an issue that really involves another jurisdiction, and they won't be there. You know, if you're talking about a bypass around the city of Marquette, from the north, there's only one place it's going to go. It's going to go to Marquette Township. And I really think that discussion should start with them. I would be angry if I were in the city of Marquette and Marquette Township and the county of Marquette called a meeting that involved us and we weren't part of it. So I just think we're heading in the wrong direction. And I also agree that, I think, the agency we should be dealing with in the county is the county road commission. But first of all, I think it has to be Marquette Township. You know, every time we do this, we're perceived as saying, well, all we care about is Marquette, you know, and we don't care about anybody else. And I don't think it helps our cause when we do that. I don't think it's a positive for us. So I think the answer here is if there is a bypass, Marquette Township really has to be part of it, and they certainly have to be part of the discussion from the get-go.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Commissioner Kebensi, would you make a motion to that effect? I would certainly support it if you did.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Have we had any discussions so far with Marquette Township, Sub Rosa, to this with perhaps staff-level discussions, if I might direct that at the city manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. We've had seven years of discussions with the county, the county road commission, supporting their plans, first for what had been originally a private road and then a county road, CR 595. We provided them with a constant stream of endorsements from the commission, supporting not only their application before the Michigan authorities, but also before the federal authorities and the EPA. We provided statements as well. In working through all of those discussions, and again, with the county road commission and with the Marquette Township and other townships, we've had lots of discussions at the administrative level. It's important to note that even recently, in meeting with our officials, we've confirmed that they have similar plans for roads that handle haul traffic in their master plan that was just endorsed last year. But our perspective was the mine, in one case, is 40 miles away. The lumber is up in Big Bay. Some of the traffic is locally generated through Marquette Township, but other traffic is generated in Powell Township and other areas. That's an awful lot of ground to presume that the only possible alternative at this point is going to be running through Marquette Township. And as noted before, it would make me very angry if I were Marquette Township or Powell Township and I wasn't invited to something that potentially my common service organization, the county road commission, was going to be having discussions or taking action on without consulting me. So in looking at all the possible different permutations, given that there has been no alternative identified by anybody yet, we wanted to make sure that we had as comprehensive and as encompassing an approach to having this discussion as possible. And from that standpoint, we've worked with the other townships administratively to talk about potentially what their plans are. The county has not yet, although they've invited us to participate in their dialogue about the CR 595, they have not revealed what their regional transportation plans are or even what the long-term county plans for roads might be. And we thought it would be best first to make sure that before we're asking for the township to participate with us, that we aren't asking for something that might preclude the existence of some sub-underplan that the county has already published. So we've done the administrative work. We'll certainly support any direction the commission takes. As was reported by Commissioner Kebensi, we've shared the private views of the county board on this matter. We anticipate at some point, wherever that alternative route might go, being fully engaged with the jurisdiction that would be responsible for hosting it, and of course, with the road commission, that would presumably be the lead for building it.
I would think that it's very important that we engage with the county board, because they are, after all, the ones that control the county. And I think, as just indicated, this is an issue that goes beyond Marquette Township and the city of Marquette and Powell Township. It's all encompassing issue for the county of Marquette. And I think it would be very worthwhile to sit down at the table with our county commissioners and have them on record, and us, too, with where we see the difficulties to be and what the common answer and solution might be to come out of that. And then, once that process is done, if it's necessary, and it probably would be, to take it down to the next level, then at that point, I think we should be engaging then with the townships as necessary to a specific course of action, rather than just the generalized one that we would have worked with the county board. And at the point that the road commission steps into that, that's, again, a different issue, because private conversations have been held all over the place for a very long period of time, and they obviously have come to no fruition. So it's important that we hold it, I believe, in a public forum, so we can publicly discuss what is best for all parties involved, and that I see at the county level. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'd weigh in on the side. I agree, I think that it's important to have the county board here, but I think it's also important to have the county road commission and Marquette Township. They are the affected jurisdiction. If you have a bypass road, it's not really even our jurisdiction at all. It's going to be all in probably Marquette Township. And I think from an efficiency standpoint and a courtesy standpoint, I think it would be good to invite those other actors. It may appear that we're slighting them if we don't, and it's just going to involve them in future meetings, it's just going to take much longer. So I would support, I think Commissioner Kebensi made a motion of some sort, or she probably should enunciate it, but I would support that idea.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I'm going to follow Commissioner Neme's idea, and I hope Sarah's listening to this, to include the county commission in the township, Marquette Township, city of Marquette, and highway, Marquette County Highway Commission. I think that's reasonable. And the proof of the pudding is who's going to come. I know the Marquette Township and city of Marquette will be there for sure. And I really hope that the county commission recognizes that this is not just a township issue. Already, I think we know that two townships are profoundly interested in a solution. And I think everybody who lives in Marquette County, once something doesn't happen, like a road moving it away from the intersection of Target and Walmart, is going to be most unhappy, along with the people in Marquette Township and the city of Marquette. So it is a county problem. It is a county issue. And the fact is, Rio Tinto is closed right now. They're dark, both at their mine and at the mill. And it's to their benefit, too, because they have some time here. There's an indefinite time when they're going to open. This is an opportunity for all parties... This is a, an opportunity for all parties to get together and solve the problem. So, I think, I would hope, I'm gonna defer to you making the motion and if you are persuaded by Bob's and my persuasive arguments, hopefully.
Any other Commissioner wanting to address this issue? Commissioner Kambenzi?
I'd like to make a motion to direct the City Manager to request a joint work session with the Marquette Township Commission and the Marquette County Board of Commissioners, as well, hopefully with the County Road Commission, if possible, to discuss the need for an alternative truck route.
Is there a second? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll second the motion.
Anything further? Commissioner Kambenzi?
Just that I think we all want to get to the same place, but I do believe the process is very important to everything the commissioners before me at the city have worked on to build a, a good foundation with the township. And I, I just think this is a better way to go about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I've, I've said, I've said it before. I think, you know, if we're gonna talk about this, we should get the players involved. And then they, you know, the Marquette, the, the Road Commission is a separate body. They're appointed by the County Road Commission, but they are a separate body. And they have authority and they have, you know, their own staff and actions. And so I, I think it's important they be part of it as well.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner? Commissioner Stonehouse?
You realize we could have 30 people in that room?
That would be good.
You realize what will come out of having 30 people in a room? Nothing.
Oh, if the right people are there, that's a good thing.
Anything further? Commissioner Stonehouse? Commissioner Coyne?
Just a question on that. How many people signed the Declaration of Independence? Are they, was that 30 people or so? I think so. Thank you. So?
Anyways, seeing no further comment, I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Repose?
No.
No. Motion passes four to two. Showing, showing Commissioner Stonehouse and Mayor DePietro opposing. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public comment. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time? Come on up.
Thank you. Once again, for the record, my name is Ken Chapsky and I reside at 310 East Hewitt Street. And for this public comment, I'm putting on a little different cap that I wear, and this happens to be as a board member of the Michigan Historic Preservation Network, which is a nonprofit statewide organization that advocates for historic preservation issues throughout our state. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to remind everybody that our 33rd Annual Conference is being held this year in Marquette on May 8th through 11th. It's going to be held, the main conference will be at the University Center at Northern Michigan University, but there will be walking tours occurring throughout our historic downtown area and the historic neighborhoods and so on and so forth. Mayor DePietro has been kind enough to be giving one of our welcoming addresses at the conference, and I'd like to thank him for that. And I've left a number of these brochures out on two of the tables. And when you see hundreds, hopefully, of historic preservation people wandering around the city in Marquette, welcome them and hope to see some of you there also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time?
Yar Melanki in Nate Market Drive. I know we can't do rebuttal, but Mr. Coyne, I'm sorry that you put me in a negative category, and that was the furthest from my intention. My intention was to look at all the avenues for the citizens of our community, the good and the bad, and what the costs are for having this park in our community. And at the end of the day, if everything falls into place, then it's a good thing. If it doesn't fall into place, then it's not a good thing. And that's why I entertain that we look at all the avenues, the good and the bad of that, the warm fuzzies, the emotion sometimes takes over and, and kind of forgets what the inside meat of the project is. And as long as you look at all the details and, and the meat of the project, and then at the end of the day, if it's all good, then it's good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time?
Thank you, Jeff Barito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. In a Frederick Olmsted biography, landscape is defined as a blend of opportunism and artifice. The requirement is functionally, of functionality is implied. Regarding suburban gardens, less wilderness and disorder, I object to, he said. Could you ever learn from this? A colleague of Olmsted's wrote, he was still hurt by public criticism. I think it comes harder to an old man to be grossly insulted, Olmsted observed. Nor had he learned to accept professional setbacks. You are preaching truths above the comprehension of our generation, said Olmsted. The colleague added, indifference and degradation are conditions to be anticipated and therefore not to excite disappointment, in reference to commissions that Olmsted toiled with. His original success with Central Park was an anomaly. You are compelled to throw your pearls before swine, he cynically observed, and are fortunate if they do not turn and rend you for not giving them their favorite swill. He maintained a constant, if not guarded optimism about people's ability to appreciate the scenic and restorative powers of landscape. This is why failures rankled so. This strikes too close to home. The author expresses the frustration so accurately and written 110 years ago. The gist of this is that most commission actions reflect who's in power, not always what's in the best good of the overall people. This mentality is reflected in your compulsion to justify less-than-ideal land uses merely because the new use is better than what was there. It's reflected in the excessive hardwood acres that you squandered for a landfill that will never need those acres over its foreseeable life. It's evident at the roundabout, opposite Lower Harbor Park, at Lake Shore Site, and a needless loss of life at Pitnick Rocks. In each case, we'd have averted public injury through common sense, vision, or the needed mechanism to incorporate viable public input into the decision-making process. Shamefully, personal agendas have clouded your judgment. You can't even act deceitfully without messing up, as we saw in your attempt to limit citizen comment time. Your trick had the opposite effect that you'd sought to achieve. All I need to do is keep showing up at every meeting and you'll continue to see one-third more of me than ever before. You're probably feeling the difference already. During our extra time together, we can revisit a long list of unresolved issues, such as the substandard commons ice rink, the bungled roundabout opportunity, Mr. Coyne's men's room behavior of January 30, 2012, and the drowning that Mr. Ryan doesn't want to hear about because his perceived right to ignore someone was more important to him than a visitor's life. To save embarrassment, Mr. Coyne is urged to apologize, and Mr. Ryan is urged to admit that had you followed my July 26, 2010 advice, that boy would still be alive.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time?
I'm Kambenzi, 306 North Sixth Street. Figure as long as I'm here on a cold snowy night, I might as well get my money's worth. Just a little comment on item number 11. And my experience in doing things with the DEQ, wetlands, permit applications and such, what they call it is a public comment period. And it's not a public hearing, it's a certain period of time. And typically, like with the wetlands permits, there's been like a 30-day period where it's just basically left to sit to gather any public comments. And I don't know, you know, this is not the DEQ, this is the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, but if there is a certain period specified, a certain length of time, then I guess we would probably have to, you know, comply with that period. I mean, you could, you could keep the comments open for two weeks if that's, if that suffices for the period. And I don't know what it is in this case, or Ken probably doesn't, you know, Bill probably knows, and he's 5,000 miles away. So anyhow, that's my comments.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment and turn it over to my fellow city commissioners, and I'll start with Commissioner Coyne.
Thank you. I apologize to Yarma for misquoting you. I, I think you have a valid point. You were trying to point out other, other issues, so I apologize. I would like to have the Commission consider scheduling another work session for the purpose of continuing our work on evaluating the City Manager and the City Attorney. And I would urge all of the commissioners to read the brochures and, and articles that Commissioner Kambenzi gave us, particularly the evaluation recommended by the International City Managers Association. It is, I think, very applicable to our evaluation process. And included in that are, of one of the things in there is the strategic things that we should be evaluating the manager on specific things. So I would hope we could pursue that work session that we had to come back to a vote and an agreement on that. I also would like, down the road, and this is in the future, to have a work session after the Senior Citizen Task Force has finished their four public meetings where they are getting more input on what the community wants for a senior center. And I, I would urge you, if you haven't done this, I've done this this past couple of weeks, is visit the senior center in Gwin. I'm going to the one in Ishpeming, and I'm going to the one here Thursday, to get a real idea of what they do and with what they do in terms of what they have as budgets and what their programs are and philosophies. I've learned a lot with, by doing that. And I think before we get into this further, we ought to all have a knowledge of what other senior citizen programs are really all about and how they work and, and including ours. So I would urge you to do that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Ryan?
I think we had a good night, even though the temperature in here was very warm. I think we have to look in our capital budget and see if we can't develop a better heating system for this building. I think we had a really good discussion on Cliff's Dow, and we did have a special meeting, a work session, that is, before the regular meeting. And I think for a lot of people watching the, the meeting and even watching the presentation, it's very difficult to, to pick up on some of the nuances of what's happening. But I think the key thing is, the city is working well with the MDEQ, which is important. I think our staff, a good team is working on it, headed up by Dennis Stackowitz. And I think we're making progress, you know, and our consultant, Rich Barron, said he didn't use the term, "We're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel." He was very clear about that. But, but I think we have made progress, and I think that's, that's very good. Pleased to hear we're having a Historic Preservation Conference in Marquette. I think we have a lot to be proud of here, and I think people are gonna see a wonderful community, and so I'm, I'm really happy about that. On the issue of the Clark's Park, I, I've said I support this. I think it's a, it's a magnificent gift. Certainly, there are issues to be worked out. I was pleased to hear what Dennis Stackowitz had to say tonight, that even if the grant, grant is awarded, there will be an adequate time to work out all the details. And I, I know that those working to generously give us the park are gonna find out it's not that easy when you start working with the bureaucracy, but hopefully that all comes to play. But if people do have thoughts they want to share with us, they of course can do that anytime, and if, if not, be at our meeting on March 25th and let us know what they think. So, leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I too was very impressed with the work that we, or the, the meeting we had referenced, Cliff's Dow, and the progress being made. I mean, it's kind of like eating an elephant, you know, and you gotta do it one bite at a time. And we indeed have been doing that, and I commend greatly the, the work team we have doing that effort. We will all end up the better for it. I also found it interesting too, of course, the historic conference coming up this, this June, May, sorry about that. We'll get them up here maybe just when snow is gone. But we also have a Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Mayor's Initiative meeting here, which is a national meeting of that group. That group is considered to be the Gold Star Environmental Group of the Great Lakes, and that will be in town, I think, 19 June through 21 June. So we have a number of conferences coming in that really highlight, I think, the unique attributes of Marquette, the success the city has had, both environmentally and again keeping our historic past with us and reusing, historic reuse, et cetera. So that's, that's really a pleasure to see, and it's gonna be fun, I think, to see a bunch of new folks in town looking at our city. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Kambenzi?
I'll keep mine brief. First, I'd like to congratulate the boys, Alpine Division One and Nordic Ski Champs, for not only representing our city in sportsmanship, but also leadership. And it's always nice to have them come forward and be recognized here. To thank them for, for working hard at what they do and being a part of our city. And the only other thing I have to say is, I would like to go to the Historic Preservation Conference. I think it's something that our community could learn a lot from. I know there are a lot of people here that would like to dig further into preserving and, and finding mechanisms to help keep what makes us unique alive, so I will be attending that. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kambenzi. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to support Commissioner Coyne's request for a work session to evaluate the City Manager. I, it's something I kind of forgot about after our last work session, and, and I had intended to make contact with our, our Friday agenda people and, and failed to do so. So I'm glad you brought it up. Thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Neme. And at this time, I'd like to congratulate Marquette Police Officer Mark Haynes. On March 16th, Police Officer Mike Haynes will have his 15-year anniversary with the Marquette PD. Again, congratulations to Officer Mark Haynes on his 15 years of service, and keep up the good work, sir. You're doing excellent. The Marquette Fire Department would like to remind residents when changing their clocks on Sunday, yesterday, March 10th, to also change your batteries in their smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. This only takes a moment, but is a best early warning. A family has to leave your home immediately in case of a fire or a carbon monoxide warning. Also, the Marquette Fire Department has free batteries for these detectors and for the residents, if they need assistance, all you have to do is call the Marquette Fire Station Number One on South Third Street at 225-8936, and the firefighters will go to your home and will install the batteries in your detectors free of charge. So take advantage of this. It's very important when you, it's easy to forget about it, but after emergency, a lot of people wish they would have taken that moment to do it. So please take advantage of the Marquette Fire Department and their service. And I'd also like to remind all hockey fans of the upcoming Pigs and Heat hockey game this Wednesday, March 13th, at 7:00 PM at the Lakeview Arena in Marquette. The cost is $1 per ticket to attend this fire relief fundraiser. After 30 years of performing these emergency fundraising hockey events, we all know of someone in our community who have been assisted after experiencing a home fire tragedy, tragedy. It is a trauma that can leave a family needing an immediate place to stay, helping replacing clothing and personal items after losing everything in a fire. Again, please support this great event, bring out the family, and enjoy an evening of fun watching the Marquette County law enforcement officers play hockey against the Marquette County firefighters hockey team. I promise, fun will be had by all in attendance. Good luck to both teams and players. And again, thank you for helping our residents in need of assistance during an emergency in Marquette County. I also believe our COP, or our Chief of Police, is the head coach on this, on the local law enforcement team. So anyways, good luck to both teams. Yeah, staying on the bubble, both teams. Again, congratulations to the Marquette Senior High School Redman Boys Ski Team for winning the MHSAA Division One State Alpine Ski Title at Downstate Boeing Mountain. Also, congratulations to the Marquette Senior High School Girls Team, taking third place Also, congratulations to the Marquette Senior High School Girls Team taking third place in their meet in Downstate. Good job, girls. I know the competition was very tough down there in Boeing Mountain. And again, congratulations to the Marquette Senior High School Boys Ski Team for winning the MHSAA Division One State Championship. And this is of interest because on March 25, 2013, at 9:00 AM to noon and from 1:30 to 4:30, residents will be able to attend the board of review right here in the city commission chambers. And again, March 26, 2013, from 1:00 PM until 4:00 and then from 6:00 PM until 9:00. So don't be calling us commissioners saying that about your taxes on your houses and valuation. You'll have your chance to talk to these people, they listen to you. And I've heard many people, residents in the past, say when they came here, they felt comfortable and when they got done, their issue was addressed and they did end up getting reappraised, not higher, but a little bit lower. So watch how you say that when you're going there to present your tax issues. Also, I'd like to have the city manager, Bill Vida, announce his next community office hours, date and location. Also, when he does, please note the time changes due to another scheduled meeting at 11:00 AM that morning. City manager?
Thank you, your honor, and again, thank you to the whole commission for the great support we've gotten this evening. Pursuant to the mayor's request, community office hours this Wednesday are going to be from 9:00 to 11:00 instead of 10:00 to 12:00 because of another meeting we'll be attending in Esconaba that day. So again, community office hours Wednesday, 9:00 to 11:00 in the community conference room on the first floor of Peter White Public Library. We'll look forward to seeing all interested residents coming out and sharing how we can make the city better. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, city manager, Bill Vida. Thank my city commissioners for a productive evening and everybody that attended. With that, we're adjourned at 9:56. Thank you.